All right, good morning once again. Welcome to Harden County Commissioners Court. We're in our back end session for our regular meeting and again, all members of the court are present and this regular meeting is called order. Your one will please rise from the invitation which will be delivered by Commissioner Kirkendall followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Dear heaven and father, we come before you today, Lord, and we're grateful and thankful for life, Lord. We pray that, Lord, our gifts, talents, and education will be put to good use, Lord, as we make decisions on behalf of our citizens. Well, we pray for our first responders, God, and we pray that you protect those who protect us, and we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is to consider and possibly approve the amendments of March eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, regular and special meetings as presented by Mrs. Beckman. That motion by Commissioner Young, say goodbye Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Beckman. Number four, consider approval of request by the Honorable Deborah McWilliams County Treasurer to cancel all registered claims from March eleventh, twenty twenty-five, and approval of today's cash statement as presented. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me of the liability of one million, five hundred seventy-one thousand, four hundred eighty dollars and eighty-six cents. On our cash report summary and general checking, we have five hundred thirty-four thousand, nine dollars and ninety-five cents. First Financial Bank General Checking Special Money Market, thirty-one million, one hundred eighty-four thousand, eleven dollars and thirty-nine cents. And Texpool General, three hundred fifty-seven thousand, one hundred ninety-three dollars and eighty-two cents, for a totaling cash funds of thirty-two million, seventy-five thousand, two hundred fifteen dollars and sixteen cents.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, say goodbye Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number five, authorization to pay county bills as presented by Mrs. Angela Gore, County Auditor. Good morning.
Good morning. Our prior period expenditures from March the twelfth through the twentieth is one million, one hundred fifty thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty-eight cents. Expenditures for Commissioners Court today are five hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars and nine cents. We have a list of an additional bill for our health, dental, and life insurance at three hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy cents, for a total expenditures and transfers of two million, fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-seven cents. Gross payroll for March the twentieth was six hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents, and the total transfers for that payroll was one million, one hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-two cents.
Please pay the bills. Motion by Commissioner Cook, say goodbye Commissioner Young, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Number six, consider approval of request by Mr. Calvin Gocier of S and C Builders LLC to approve a variance for the lots aside setbacks of four planted lots. Replant of lots five, six, and seven, block fourteen of the Woodcrest subdivision addition two, as reported in volume two, page sixty-five, patent records of Harden County, Texas into lots five A, five B, six A, and seven A. Block fourteen of the Woodcrest subdivision addition two, Lisa Duncan League abstract fourteen located in Lumberton in precinct four. We just had a public hearing at nine forty-five AM. One neighbor spoke. I wouldn't say he spoke in favor or against it. He had a question that was answered and he seemed to be okay with that. Commissioner Cook, this is in your precinct if you'd like to address that?
Uh, no, there's really no further information to add to it. I moved to approve.
That motion by Commissioner Cook, saying goodbye Commissioner Kirkendall, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number seven is a presentation by Mr. Jimmy McKinnon, the Chairman of the Harden County Historical Commission. He's going to present the annual report for fiscal year twenty-three and talk about the Alamo Victory or Death Letter Project. Good morning, sir.
Yes, sir. It's actually a report for twenty-four.
Okay, twenty-four.
Oh, of course, I do this annually as the annual report and I have already sent this into Austin as required, and I do that in February. And we copy you with your copy and if you have any questions, well, I'll be happy to try and answer them. We were fairly active last year and doing the things that keep us in good standing with the T H C.
That's what's about.
I don't look for award, I just look for being in good standing.
Yes, sir. Is there anything about the report you want to make sure?
Not, not in particular. We just keep, just keep doing it and try to help preserve Harden County history.
What about the Victory or Death Letter Project?
We're probably up to speed on that. You and I passed the emails. I've gotten you three estimates on the stone and it's whatever the court's pleasure.
Let's, uh, Commissioner Kirkendall, do you want to add anything to that? Talk about the date that we're going to have that and?
Well, yeah, you know, we're not trying to have the stone here in time, but we're gonna make arrangements. We're gonna go ahead and have our dedication on San Jacinto Day, the twenty-first of April.
Okay.
So, we're not gonna let that hold us up. We'll take care of that as, you know, as we get to it.
Sounds good.
You presented the history of this plaque in one of the other meetings, correct?
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's, uh, it's a statewide project. Try to get one of these plaques in every county in the state. And it's, it's the text of the famous Victory or Death Letter written by William Barrett Travis from the Alamo. That letter inspired groups from our very area to go and try to get to the Alamo, but the Alamo fell before they could get there, so they wound up in San Houston's army at San Jacinto. So, that helps bring about the victory of San Jacinto.
Absolutely. The plaque is absolutely beautiful. So, when the public gets to see it, they will be absolutely amazed at it. Well, thank you, Jimmy, for all the hard work you've done.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your dedication. We feel like kids are more impressed by something like that than seeing it just in a textbook. Just, you know, a lot of information. That is something that's a truly wonderful thing that they can focus on and really kind of, kind of feel, get the feeling of it. So, anyway, we just, we just think it's a good project.
The recommendation that you made was to purchase that from?
Direct from the company that owns the quarry.
Okay, and then we'll have some labor here to help offload it and do whatever we need to do from there.
I'm trying to find someone that can do that. I, I think that won't be a problem. You know, we'll have to search a little bit. The vet knows how to handle that. But I don't think we'll have a problem finding somebody.
What, when do you think it'll be here?
Well, there's twelve, fourteen weeks on the quarry.
Okay.
They apparently don't cut until you order.
I got you. All right. Well, if you need a P O or anything, if you'll get with Misty after the meeting, she'll be glad to get with you and we'll get them whatever they need to get that order going.
Okay, well, thank you all very much. And thank y'all for what y'all do up here.
Same to you.
Y'all don't have easy jobs.
Item number eight is acceptance of resignation of Mr. Sam Ashworth as a Director of Southeast Texas Groundwater Conservation District and consider appointment of Mr. Paul Andrews to fill the vacancy effective immediately for the remainder of the three-year term ending on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. Commissioner Young assisted, in fact, I would say she handled, finding a replacement for Mr. Ashworth who served on the groundwater conservation district for many years. We sure do appreciate his service, but he was ready to, to go and then Mr. Andrews is here and he graciously accepted the request by Commissioner Young to serve on that board. I know you talked to John Martin the other day, make sure that you knew what you were getting into and you still want to do it, right?
Oh, yeah, we're good.
Good deal. Commissioner?
Uh, yeah. I want to, to thank you for stepping up to do this. I know that you're a busy man, but I think you'll be an asset to this board. And I make the motion to appoint Mr. Andrews and accept the resignation letter from Mr. Ashworth.
That motion by Commissioner Young, saying goodbye Commissioner Kirkendall, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. It's official. Take it immediately, it says. So, thank you. Again, we appreciate you. Number nine, consider request by Ms. Lisa Nix, Harden County Crime Victims Assistant Senator Director, to adopt the following three resolutions. A, a resolution ten dash twenty-five proclaiming April as Child Abuse and Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And we're gonna take these one at a time. Ms. Nix, is there anything you want to talk about regarding this resolution? All right. I'll entertain a motion. That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saying goodbye Commissioner Young, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I think it speaks for itself and definitely appreciate all that y'all do to help everyone who's a victim of, of any crime.
We appreciate you all. Thank you.
Item B is resolution eleven dash twenty-five proclaiming the first Wednesday of April to be the Start By Believing Day. Anything you want to say about this one? All right. That motion by Commissioner Young, saying goodbye Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. And then item C is resolution twelve dash twenty-five proclaiming the week of April sixth through the twelfth, two thousand twenty-five, as Crime Victims Rights Week. Anything you want to say about this one? Again, it just kind of speaks for itself. That motion to approve by Commissioner Young, saying goodbye Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you again. Still don't want to say anything?
Just thank y'all.
We appreciate y'all. Thank you very much. Item ten is to consider approval of an order authorizing the San Jacinto Day fireworks sales which begin April sixteen, twenty twenty-five and end at midnight on April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saying goodbye Commissioner Cooper, any discussion?
Where do these come from?
Where do you what?
The, these orders?
I thought you were gonna say the fireworks. From, uh, we get them from TAC, is that correct?
Yes.
They come from TAC. The actual order?
Yeah. I'm, I'm just wondering how it comes to a vote.
Um, there's certain fireworks sales that don't require a vote of Commissioners Court, and I think there's five new ones that were adopted, what, six or eight years ago by the legislature, but we have to vote on each of those and this is one of those. And I think mainly, if we're in a drought, we can vote it down.
I just figured we're gonna have one for Valentine's Day for all the self fireworks.
Or maybe just here.
St. Patrick's Day.
Y'all have one in June for L G B T Q.
Any other discussion on item number ten? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number eleven, consider approval of request by Mr. Aaron Tupper, Technology Director, to adjust the following line items to purchase mobile data terminals and vehicle document stations for the Sheriff's Office utilizing opioid settlement funds. If approved, amend the fiscal year twenty-five opioid settlement budget as follows. Transfer thirty thousand out of the medical supplies and six thousand, two hundred dollars out of the equipment, both into the minor equipment and, and supplies for a total amount of thirty-six thousand, two hundred dollars. That motion by Commissioner Young, saying goodbye Commissioner Cooper, any discussion?
Are we replacing old ones or are these new vehicles?
So, these are, these are the mobile data terminals inside them. We're replacing the ones that they have or way past their life. So, they won't take the system upgrade and it's time to do system upgrades on them.
Thank you. How many is this?
Uh, we're getting thirty-two of them.
For this much?
No, there's more money.
Okay, six to say.
In that line item.
You found a good deal somewhere. All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The ones that are in there, are those the ones that Commissioner Cook started with back in oh seven or oh eight?
Close.
I bet. Those are old.
Well, those are, those are actually the, uh, what they call?
Toughbooks.
Toughbooks. What we actually started with was actually a Dell computer.
Mm-hmm. That's true.
Just a regular laptop.
We got our use out of it, I think. Y'all did. Number twelve, consider approval of request by Mr. Aaron Tupper as the Emergency Mortgage Management Coordinator to pay invoice number twenty-four dash six six two in the amount of two thousand, five hundred dollars to Hydratec Environmental for preparation and submission of environmental documentation for geology contract number two zero dash zero six five dash one four seven dash C eight five seven. Saratoga Road Improvements Project to be paid out of line item zero one zero four oh one four one one, grand administrative expenses. Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saying goodbye Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number thirteen, consider adoption of resolution thirteen dash twenty-five authorizing submission of one or more applications for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program through the Texas Division of Emergency Management under D R forty-seven eighty-one and commit matching funds in the amount not to exceed twenty-five percent of accepted grant awards as requested by Mr. Tupper. Um, which is, which disaster forty-seven eighty-one?
Forty-seven eighty-one is the April.
Spring storm?
Spring storm.
Okay, and these are the hazard mitigation projects out of that disaster? Have a motion by Commissioner Young, saying goodbye Commissioner Cooper, any discussion?
On this twenty-five percent, do we know the total amount?
No, sir, because we don't have awards. Uh, so, it, it depends on what all projects are awarded. We're gonna apply for several. The last couple of years, they've only picked one or two out of what we've applied for. We probably will see that. So, any projects that we've applied for in the past, we're going to just apply for again and say, hey, we still need this. This is still a need of ours.
And, and that's pretty typical, the seventy-five, twenty-five percent, right?
Yes.
Some of these projects, we have added to the regional flood plan for the state. Um, and we can apply for the Flood Infrastructure Fund, Texas Water Development Board, to cover that twenty-five percent. That just happened. We have those added.
Commissioner Young, Aaron Tupper, and Clay Woodward worked really hard with Melinda Smith and some others to make sure they got added into the plan, so thank y'all for doing that. And if I forgot anybody, please let me know.
I think that was it.
Okay. So, we don't have a grand administrator to apply for this? Are we doing this ourselves?
No, we have a grand administrator. That was already pre-rewarded.
Okay. So, we'll bring that to court at some time and discuss the projects and then we'll bring it up another time later to, to, uh, to take action to apply for those projects? Is that the plan?
I believe we've already taken action to apply for these projects. This is just the resolution.
Okay. All right. I'll catch you up here in a minute.
Is that the list we went over that day with, was it Melinda?
Uh, we have went over it before. I, I don't, I don't recall which time or that we've went over them, but we have went over all the projects before. Uh, you know, one of them that we're looking at is the generator that wasn't funded in the hazard mitigation for the jail.
Yeah.
Uh, so, several studies, drainage studies and/or drainage projects that haven't been funded in the past. We're basically just cycling those back through and it shows a need. Like, we still need this, even though y'all didn't, as long as last time, we still need it.
All right. Did we vote? I don't think we did. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Item fourteen, consider approval of request by Sheriff Davis to authorize the county judge to execute amendment five to interlocal cooperation contract with Spindletop Center for Mental Health Liaison Program. Do we have that amendment yet?
That I'll have to some get through.
Is this for the vehicle? Is that what it's for? If the court would not mind, um, this, this is going to amend the Spindletop agreement to make sure that the vehicle is covered in the grant. I think it's a budget amendment.
Yes, sir.
Move some money around to cover that vehicle. And so, if the court would give me the authority to sign that after Mr. Minnick has reviewed it and approved it as the form, that will allow us to go ahead with the order on number fifteen. And if y'all prefer to table this in wait, we can do that as well.
Look, if you're guys present.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saying goodbye Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? Minnick, sound okay?
Yes, I have received it at this time.
Should just be a one-page amendment that we have, just like we've done in the past.
Judge, it's a hundred percent match and then we don't have to pay anything for it.
So, no match, hundred percent?
No match, just a little bit.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number fifteen, consider approval of request by Sheriff Davis to purchase a two thousand twenty-four Ford Expedition S S V in the amount of sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty cents, utilizing the Buy Board Cooperative Purchasing Program and funding the purchase of Spindletop Center Mental Health Liaison Grant to be paid as follows. Sixty-one thousand, five twenty-six twenty will be the auto purchase and four hundred dollars is the Buy Board fee and that's code of the dues and subscriptions. That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saying goodbye Commissioner Cook, I want to say that Spindletop covers a mental health deputy. He is assigned just to handle calls for service that are related to mental health where law enforcement is to be involved. That covers training, this vehicle, any vehicle that has been purchased in the past, all the expenses for that vehicle. There were some questions about this earlier, so I want to make sure that, try to answer those to everybody else that may have those questions. And then the vehicle is being purchased through Silsby Fleet. The invoice actually comes from Lakeway Chevrolet in Jasper because they handle the Chevrolet sales for Silsby Fleet. But it is a local dealer and to my knowledge, that's the only dealer in Southeast Texas on the state contract. Is that correct, Misty?
I think so.
All right. Just trying to answer some questions that were coming at me earlier to make sure that those are covered. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number sixteen, consider approval of request by myself to purchase a two thousand twenty-five Chevrolet Traverse S U V from Lake Country Chevrolet. This is where Lake Country Chevrolet comes from. The Ford is actually coming from Silsby Ford through Silsby Fleet. I misspoke on that earlier. Anyway, a two thousand twenty-five Chevrolet Traverse S U V from Lake Country Chevrolet in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy cents to be assigned to the motor pool and paid for utilizing the zero one zero five one oh seven, five seven four auto purchase line item. If approved, amend the fiscal year twenty-five budget as follows. We need to create a new line item for the Buy Board or Cooperative Purchasing Fee. It's dues and subscriptions, zero one zero five one zero three nine zero, and transfer three hundred dollars from the auto purchase line item to the new line item.
So.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saying goodbye Commissioner Cooper, any discussion?
Are we replacing any vehicles or?
Probably gonna replace the Malibu. We've been having some issues with that. We're getting it fixed and if we don't have any more issues, we may keep it. I hadn't really decided. But once the new one's in, I'll bring that back up to y'all and we'll discuss it. But the Malibu's a little older. We've been having a few issues with it. And people don't usually take that one out. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number seventeen, consider approval of request by Ms. Sims, purchasing agent, to authorize the county judge to execute change order number one with Construction Managers of Southeast Texas for Courthouse Jail and Renovations, an ARCA-funded project. Good morning.
Good morning.
What's the, uh, what's the change for the abatement?
Yes, sir. We actually saved some money on the grout, so, um, that's gonna cover what we need to spend on our abatement.
All right, so there's a reduction of sixty-five hundred and eighteen fifty that has to do with the grout and then an increase of fifty-two hundred plus twelve hundred. The abatement's fifty-two hundred and the abatement, title of domestic abatement is twelve hundred. Anyway, this, this is an overall net decrease of one thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. So. That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saying goodbye Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number eighteen, consider approval of request by Mrs. Sims to pay invoice number two five zero one zero three zero in the amount of ten thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty cents to Leavens Engineering and Design LLC for engineering services related to Cook's Lake Road drainage project to be paid out of the April twenty-sixth severe weather storm line item, four two zero six two two four two, engineering services. Motion by Commissioner Young, saying goodbye Commissioner Kirkendall, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. You have to have to hear that. Number nineteen, consider approval of request by Mrs. Sims to accept the donation of a True Model V D M dash two six dash L D cooler, serial number ending in eight four, or full serial numbers, eight four five eight five oh three, from the Subway in Lumberton, Texas, to be used in the courthouse cafe. Motion by Commissioner Young, saying goodbye Commissioner Cook, any discussion? I sure do appreciate that donation very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Passes. And that happened because Regina reached out with her handout and he agreed to give it, so we appreciate that as well.
Doesn't come with any sanctions?
No, we can ask. Number twenty, discussion by Honorable Matthew Minnick, County Attorney, regarding the utilization, utilization of the three thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and ten cents from Texas Association of Counties for promotion of the Healthy County Initiative to encourage participation in the Harden County Healthy County Program, sustaining employee engagement in health and wellness activities throughout the year. Good morning, Mr. Minnick.
Good morning.
Thanks again for taking that on.
Yes. Thank you. Well, look, Minnick met last week and we came up with an idea of how to utilize the thirty-six hundred we received from TAC. We got some concerns back from the auditor department, which I kind of agreed with them in that, and so, we're trying to work with TAC on finding an alternative. We were gonna utilize that money to buy gift cards, but I think the concern becomes whether that becomes taxable income to employees. And I think, based on my research, it would, but maybe because it's being sent in from TAC, there could be some sort of exception. Uh, but at this time, I don't have a full answer for you, so I was just asking to move this off and see if we can get approval from TAC before we forward.
And just for everybody's awareness, it was on the agenda and on the draft agenda to do the gift cards. Matt had asked me just to take it off until he got an answer to this, but I'm asking if we could include it as a discussion. That way, if anybody else has any ideas that they want to bring up regarding this, we can talk about it here. Uh, once he gets an answer from TAC about the gift cards, I think they're gonna have another committee meeting and bring a recommendation to the next court, but, uh, anybody has any ideas? Yes, sir.
Have we done gift cards in the past?
Well, I think we've done them in the past and usually what happens is an elected official buys the gift card and donates it, so it's not coming out of the county coffers. Uh, this money was don't, or not donated. We got the money from TAC because we participate. We're trying to use that money to incentivize people to continue to participate in the program. We wanted to continue with gift cards, but if it's a taxable income, that's not good for the employee and it's a whole lot of extra work for Ms. McWilliams and the auditor, so probably wouldn't want to do that if that, if that's the way.
Can we, Mr. Nix? That if, when people participate in the other, there's some other things they can do, like getting the Fitbits and things like that. I am having to tax them every year on that.
Really?
There's like three different programs and tax ends, uh.
Through Healthy County.
Healthy County, that to, uh, Melinda, she passes it to me and in the first of the year, I do hit the employees and tax them on whatever they participated in. So.
And it's merchandise and.
Yes, there's merchandise.
Awards.
Yeah, different things, so.
Do we know what, I guess you're waiting to hear from TAC to see what we can do that would not be an issue as far as taxable?
The way I'm reading it is there's things called de minimis gifts that can be not taxable, um, and they're typically around a hundred dollars or less, um, things like that. But there are other things you can do with this money, you know, equipment, if you want to put like a gym in, stuff like that, you can do things, separate things that are also allowable. But their original thought, the committee meeting was, let's just buy gift cards and incentivize these people to come to these events, blood drives, things like that. And, um, so that was what we first thought and then we kind of hit this roadblock. So, we haven't explored other options at this point.
I think that's a great idea. If it, if it is taxable income and if everything is taxable income, then maybe we stick with the gift cards and figure out how to work that through if, uh, there's no opposition from the treasurer, H R, and auditor department. If they have issues with the extra work that creates, then maybe we do something different, but.
How, how do we show it on, I don't know, Melissa or, how do we show it on time sheets for giving them a, a extra day off or do, if they do something, get an extra day off?
Yeah, if they do their annual health screening, they get an extra day off. That's in policy for it.
We just, we add it to their, their personal day, uh, or as an extra personal day, but out beside it, we call it W D, like Wellness Day for, that's, that's how we keep track of it because that runs from December first until November thirtieth because they only have one year to use it. So, we kind of track it almost like we do the holidays for those that earn holidays.
And it becomes a P T O day?
Yes, sir.
Anybody that participates, they get it, it's added to their books?
Yes, sir. We get a list from TAC, but then we reach out because sometimes doctors' offices don't always bill correctly. So, we reach out to the elected officials and department heads or supervisors within that department to see if somebody did in fact go and get a wellness check done and then they get it today. But we, right now, we only have about half of the county participating, so that's another reason we really wanted to try to utilize these funds for that because it's, you know, just more participation and then that's more money that the county earns from TAC as well.
The higher your, the money that you receive from TAC is based on the percentage of how much we invest and improve the program. So, the more people we have, the more money we'll receive next year.
Anybody else have any other suggestions or ideas?
What, what are you suggesting for us to table this or what?
It's just a discussion item, yeah.
Okay.
We, I originally was coming to ask for utilizing thirty-six hundred to buy gift cards, but I don't want to make it be a problem, so I was holding off to see if TAC could give me some sort of guidance or incentive to see if there's another way we can utilize those funds.
All right. Anything else?
Well, we could always buy an ice cream machine and celebrate health, health and wellness.
Well, there was an option.
Put yogurt in it.
There was an option of snow cones being brought in and I said, I'm not sure that's gonna work.
I know, right? And that was just a joke on my part, so.
Well, after today, if anybody has any recommendations, contact Matt or anybody on the committee. I know that, uh, once you have the information from TAC, y'all will meet probably sometime next week and bring it back to court on April eighth. Again, thank you very much. We appreciate you heading that up.
No problem.
Next one's yours too. Number twenty-one, consider approval of request by Honorable Matthew Minnick, County Attorney, to amend the fiscal year twenty-five County Attorney Supplement Budget as follows. Transfer one thousand, five hundred dollars from the miscellaneous line item and one thousand, three hundred dollars from the office supplies line item into a new line item that would need to be created. Transfer one thousand five hundred dollars from the miscellaneous line item and one thousand three hundred dollars from the office supplies line item into a new line item that would need to be created. One four five four seven five four two six, travel and training expenses for a total amount of two thousand eight hundred dollars. Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saying goodbye Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Number twenty-two, discussion on any non-agenda item without taking action, including announcements which may be of interest to the public. Does any, uh, one present have any announcements to make or any discussion items that are not on this agenda? Going once? Going twice? Does anybody need me to announce something I've forgotten about?
Most agenda.
That's that. That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall to adjourn, saying goodbye Commissioner Cooper, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.